Call the village board to order for Tuesday, March 24th, roll call, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Present.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowsk.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
Trustee Melczeski is excused.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remember all the men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I have two changes to the agenda. We are going to strike number five. And 11J is a repeat of something that is in the consent agenda. So I need a motion to approve with the amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda with, as amended, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Action on opening closed minutes from February 25th, 2020.
Moved to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the February 25th meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Approve the minutes from the special meeting of March 3rd, 2020.
Moved to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda, must state name and address, limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Are there any comments from the public? Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to number eight. Number eight, written communications and/or announcements. I just wanted everybody to get the written communication from the government.
Finance Officers.
Governor, Government Finance Officer Association. Our finance committee ended up getting an award again, and I know Greg doesn't always like us to recognize his finance department, but I felt that we, we should recognize him because it's, it's tough, tough times nowadays with the budget. So he does a great job.
It's getting to be an annual event, that's a great thing.
Yeah. Okay, so I need a motion to put on file.
So moved, if that's the right motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to.
Accept and place on file.
Accept and place on file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Consent agenda. 9A, action on the operator's license. B, action on the change of agent for Green Bay Hotel doing business as residence in by Marriott. 9C is action on election inspector appointments for the 2020-2021 election cycle. D is investment reports. E is budgeted expenditures, and F is department reports.
Moved to approve consent agenda.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Number 10 is a public hearing regarding ordinance 03-1-20, amending the Resh Expo planned unit development, PUD ordinance for signage, parcels VA-41-6 and VA-41-7. Is there anybody in here that would like to speak for or against in this public hearing? Anybody here who would like to speak for or against in this public hearing? Anybody who would like to speak for or against in this public hearing?
Move to close the public meeting and return to the regular order of business.
Okay.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Number 11, action items. 11A, action regarding ordinance 03-1-20, amending the Resh Expo planned unit development, PUD ordinance for signage, parcels VA-41-6 and VA-41-7. Allison.
So this is to amend the PUD for the Expo Center. It would include the entire complex, and then this deals with signage, including the most significant parts are a monument sign that would be located out on Armed Forces and Oneida Street, another one that would be located at the property edge on Oneida Street nearing Lombardi, but it's a little short of Lombardi. And then there's surrounded signage that you'll see in the packet labeled Resh Expo. There's two on Oneida Street, one is lower, one is up high on the roof. And then there are also two on Armed Forces, again, one down lower, more towards the entry, and then one up above on the perimeter of the roof. And then there is a large video board that is on the plaza side of Armed Forces. And then there's something called Media Mesh, which is kind of a translucent, translucent material that, you know, when it's all lit up, it will sort of look like a billboard, but you really can see through it. Like when you're on the inside, you can see through it. And these would all be included in the signage. And then part of doing this, PMI has agreed that they will, we previously had approved some temporary signage. Like they put these huge banners out in front of the Resh Center, that stuff would stop. Their show advertising would now appear in the digital messaging that is physically located on the Expo building, but they will market the entire complex on that. If you have specific questions, I'll just answer them.
This was approved at the site plan and the plan commission in March.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, if I might. I just think it's time we recognize our staff, and I'm not sure the public knows that this is a county, going to be, is a county facility, but the village gets involved because it's located in village, within the village limits, boundaries. And our CDA, our Community Development Authority, is involved, again, because it's in the village. But it's basically going to be a county operation. But our staff, including our village manager, village attorney, and finance director, they get involved in these issues all the time, and they do a great job in moving this, this large, large development, great development for the community forward, and I think they're to be, to be applauded for that. So I give them a lot of credit for, for doing the job that they need to do to get this, get this structure built in behalf of the community.
Yep, a lot of hours have been put into this.
Yes, they have.
A lot of them.
If there are any questions, I'll move to approve ordinance number 03-1-20.
I'll second it. Like I said, or as Madam President said, we did approve that at the site plan and plan commission. I only want to make one comment on it, and I made it at both those committee meetings. The video board, we've had an issue with that on a project that wanted two video boards on their building, and we did not allow that because of ordinance and the location. But I just want to make sure that staff knows how to explain it to the upcoming projects that might come up that are going to require a video board, and have a good definition to why they're not approved in this village.
Just as a reminder to that, the other location was on the waterfront and adjacent, immediately adjacent to residential, actually on, on multiple sides. This is in a separately zoned district, but contained within our entertainment, sports and entertainment district. And so we feel that this is a different type of environment than what is located there. And I think in terms of your feedback from the last time, it wasn't necessarily the, the video board, maybe so much as the location that you were more concerned with and trying to open that up. So we will be looking at loosening our regulations and, within the sports and entertainment district itself to try and meet some of the comments that you provided us when the last application was before us.
Yeah, I specifically had a request from one of the residents down there that, he said that there is a large billboard on the south side of Highway 172. And he said that depending upon what's on that billboard, it actually reflects into his house. So those, those sign, that signage would have been even closer. So that was our concern, was the residential. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance.
I'm assuming that, that sign that's on the corner of Oneida and Lombardi is coming down?
Oneida and Lombardi, oh, the big Expo sign, or the big, yes. Yeah, that big one is coming down.
See, there, it may already be down.
Was it down, okay.
I think it's already down.
All right, okay, okay.
But yeah, and then there'll be a, a lower monument sign that's shown in the pictures that, just keep in mind, there's still an empty lot actually on the corner of Lombardi and Oneida Street. That's lengthwise, a long rectangle that would be longer along the Lombardi side. So the, it's really at the edge of the building where the last monument sign would be.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 03-1-20. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. 11B, action regarding requested site plan review for the Element Building number three, parcel VA-460-P-113.
This is for building three for the Element, so for obvious purposes, one is complete, two is under construction currently, and then building three would be immediately next to that, still at the very end of the cul-de-sac, so they would literally be in a line. This is before you because it's in Village Center, and those items go both before site plan and before the village board. Site plan has approved the project. The building materials, all of that are essentially the same as the other two that you see. The only addition is this provides a trail connection, would actually be between building three and building four for a future building, that would cut across, kind of through, there's a little bit of a wetlands that would be between Bohemian and Capital Credit Union. And that trail would kind of connect through, through their long run. And then they also have a common shelter area for residents, which would have like a grilling area and kind of a gazebo of sorts, pergola, I think, appropriate things. Those are all in your packet.
I'll move to approve the Element Building number three, parcel VA-460-P-113.
Can I ask that you include staff, staff conditions on that?
I just would add, the pictures look nice. I mean, that's pretty well enclosed, that area where the little barn, not barn, but the book is going to be, and it looked, I hope it turns out that well.
We need a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, but I wanted to read the conditions of approval so they're read into the minutes. Engineering, verify with engineering that the sidewalk in front of building two and leading up to building three, including the driveway opening, will be installed as part of building three construction. Stormwater, verify storm number one, or ST number one is the manhole that was installed in July 2019. Public safety, ensure fire lanes are structurally designed to handle load requirements of fire apparatus. Ensure turn radius in fire lane in parking lot is adequate for fire apparatus. Ensure all portions of building are within 300 feet of at least two fire hydrants. Private hydrants may need to be installed. Recommend to approve landscape plan as presented, nice species selection, from Tim, our forester. And bike and pad, include a bike rack close to the primary entrance. So. Those are the conditions of approval to go along with the motion and the second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11C, action regarding the final plat of Alden Station, parcels VA-162 and VA-174-1.
The final steps for approval of Alden Station's subdivision plat. There are various conditions which are listed in the green sheet, which are basically just typographical and labeling issues. The main one was that the flood fringe and floodway would be revised when the LOMAR was approved by FEMA. We have received that approval letter, and therefore we would incorporate those, those changes in this document when it gets recorded. Don't ask me what LOMAR and all that stuff means. Just repeating what I'm told.
Again, Madam Chair, this has been a, a project, as you know, long in the coming, and our, again, our staff has done a great job, the village manager, village attorney, finance people, they've, they've been working very hard. It takes a lot of time and effort, especially with, with the water problems or the, not the water problem necessarily, but the, the location of the, what am I looking, what's?
Soil.
Yes, thank you. Those things had to be worked out, and they've done a great job of moving this along and they're, again, to be, to be congratulated for a job well done.
I agree.
So, so if there's no motion, I will move to approve the final plat of Alden Station, parcels VA-162 and VA-174-1 as presented. And again, subject to the conditions listed in, in item 11C.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. For the minutes, again, I would, I would like to read the conditions of approval. Revising the flood fringe, which we did get that. It was approved by FEMA. Changing the town of Lawrence to the village of Ashwabnon in the third paragraph of the surveyor's certificate. Removing the consent of mortgage certification. Changing the clerk reference from town to village in the owner's certificate of dedication. Changing the owner name from Michael Selner to Mary Karduski in the owner's certificate of dedication. Changing the plat reference to the treasurer's certificate from second addition to Hemlock South to Alden Station. Changing the Brown County treasurer name from Kerry Blaney to Paul Zeller. Approval by Brown County planning.
How'd you get to be the owner?
My dad worked for Schneider for 35 years, I guess that did it. So, anyway. So we have a motion and a second to approve the plat of Alden Station. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. 11D, action on EAB funding request. Mr. Botnick, you are on stage.
Before Tim gets started on the technical aspects of EAB, what our hope is tonight is that Tim will give you an overview of what's happening with EAB, what their plans are for dealing with it. From a budgetary standpoint, we have kind of been pushing this along. They remove trees as they can during staff time and whatnot, but this is for the ultimate removal of, plan of all the trees for which we would like to bond for, just because it's a larger sum of money rather than trying to increase budget in, you know, over a course of several years. It would be very difficult to do. It would be a lot easier to fill in with our, our funding that way. So the ultimate goal is that you have an understanding of the problem and what his plan of attack is. And then ultimately, if you approve that, then we'll bring forward bonding options specifically for that. We need to, we've worked through some different scenarios, whether we would do it all at once or break it into some pieces, but, so you don't really need to approve the bonding per se tonight. We'll come back to that. We just want to know that you approved the plan and that we can move forward with that. So I'll turn it over to Tim to talk about the little green books.
Thank you. The village has, has been preparing for EAB for about 15 years. So roughly in 2004, they founded in Detroit. Since that time, we've been able to, to make some preparations to proactively manage for EAB when it finally came to Ashwabnon. That day came about three years ago. And with this plan, we are, it kind of marks the point where we're going to be shifting from a proactive management approach to a reactive management approach. We've done numerous things, detection trapping, working with state, federal agencies on different projects. We've done a lot of work in-house without additional funding to date. Markedly, we've reduced our ash population in our parks by 50%. So we started with, you know, a certain amount of them, and over time, through the work that we did with our own crews, our own staff, we were able to reduce that by about 50%. Street trees, I think, we reduced not quite as much, 16%, which overall is a pretty significant reduction of about, by a third since 2004. The only additional funding that we've gotten and received so far was, actually trustee Williams asked to put a, I think $2,000 into the tree planting, and we use that to, to ramp up our tree planting efforts in our parks and green spaces. We have gotten some grant funding to treat trees. When that was proposed, kind of at that administration level, it wasn't a long-term approach, that was well received, so we're kind of doing the, pull the Band-Aid off as fast as you can approach. We're going to remove them over a period of five years, replant where appropriate, and then, and then go on from there. The, the project that I put together has eight different components, and I did explain them in the, in the management plan request. I don't know if, if you want me to go through each of those individual items, or if you want to take questions.
Might be helpful, Tim, if you would just at least explain the, what those things are. You know, I, I know that you guys went through and got some estimates and talked to some contractors to get your pricing, but if you could at least somewhat touch base briefly on some of those main areas, just in case the trustees get questions from constituents.
Okay. Number one, street and tree, park tree removal, that is the majority of the, of the fundraising request. So that's going to be trees that are located within the street right of way. Typical streets are going to be 70 feet wide from, from one edge of the right of way to the other. That would include all those park trees, as well as trees in our established parks where we maintain the turf underneath them. So December, January, I actually went through the entire village and re-updated all of our GIS information. So the information that's presented in the budget projections is as accurate as I could get it to be. Since work is based upon diameter larger the tree, the more it's going to cost. It's important that we had up-to-date and current information for that. The cost estimate was based upon a couple different things. I spoke with a consultant who is a friend of mine in the Milwaukee area. And if you look on one, the, the map that I included in the packet, you can see Milwaukee, Kenosha, Racine. They're past peak on managing EAB. They're like 90% mortality, so they're, they're just about done dealing with this, and they've moved on to other things. So.
It's kind of ironic this is coming today with what we're going through. I said, just kind of.
Yes, there are a lot of parallels to the current COVID-19, yes, yes. There are a lot of parallels. This is obviously is not as significant as that, but absolutely. So they're, they're kind of past peak, and so it was nice I could speak with some of my friends who are consultants in that area. And we don't have similar projects like this in the Green Bay metropolitan area, because we haven't done this yet on this type of scale. So I was able, able to get some prices from projects that they did down in that area. Local contractors, I kind of told them what, you know, what we were thinking, how we were establishing these prices, and he thinks we're, we're spot on with that. So the park tree removals will be phased in over a period of three years, years one, two, and three. That will include the stump removal and site restoration of those sites. And that will be all the responsibility of that particular contractor. Streets that are arterial collector streets will be prioritized first. For example, Cormier Road, there's a lot of traffic on that road. There are a lot of trees that are ash on that particular road, so that is something that will be a priority to do on the front end of the project. The, the debris generated from those removals will be hauled to our marshalling yard, which is up near the airport where we dump the grass and leaves and everything. And one of our preparations was to prepare a site to, to store and, and hold this large volume of material. Talking with people from Ohio and Indiana that have been through this, they said managing that flow of wood and debris is, is a major obstacle that they incurred during the process. With that being said, I did not include any revenue potentially generated through this project, i.e. wood chips, pulpwood, or sawlogs. The market is so volatile with the pricing of that. I didn't really want to project, you know, a large revenue stream coming in from, from those forest products. But this is an opportunity where we'll recover some of our money that will help offset the cost of the project. And trustee Allison Williams, we sell pulpwood to her employer. It's been a good relationship.
It's great. We love it.
We don't get rich on it, but it helps keep their pulpwood stream up and running. So it, it's been a good thing for us.
But would you sell, would you sell infected wood?
Yes, we can.
You can?
Yeah. They just, they bring it into the mill and they debark it.
As long as it gets used?
Yeah. Yeah. And the idea with, with keeping that wood at one site is we're not spreading it through firewood to other locations throughout the state where they don't have EAB. That's the primary means that is spread from one location to another, is people taking firewood up to their cottage or deer camp, and we've got new infestation. So we are going to kind of keep tight reins on, on the material as it's generated.
It's really being sold for commercial use, not for residential use at all, is it? Like, could a resident come and go and get a heaping pile of wood chips?
The wood chips, yes. Because by, through the chipping process, you kind of destroy the environment that the beetles live in. So, yeah. We, we have all kinds of wood chips available for, currently even for residents to pick up.
And Tim, can you touch on for the Dutchman Creek Conservancy area, since that's a long creek?
Sure.
You have, I think, 20 trees listed in there. Can you kind of describe that area in particular? That's not the entire creek.
Any questions about number one, the street tree, before we move on, the street and park trees?
Just, are you going to bid that out?
Yes. Yeah, this project is entirely going to be contracted out. We don't have a consultant preparing documents, you know, that's all going to be done basically in-house.
Okay.
But yeah, we do not have the resources to take this kind of project on without adding additional staff.
Okay. Even with the big machine that Tim wanted?
Yeah. I did speak to a couple of the guys that have those, and I'm trying to get them interested in looking at our work, so. Okay, number two, Dutchman's Creek Conservancy area. That's an area that is bound by Kimberly to the east, Shady to the west, and then Glen Road and Buffalo. So it's kind of that area where the backyards, we have a mowed area, somewhat mowed area, and then there was a deliberate planting of trees within that area. A little unique given the limited access for equipment, chippers, aerial trucks, even just getting debris out. So I broke that out as a separate line item. There are 20 ash trees in that area. A large percentage of them currently are infested with EAB. And we came, I came up with a, an estimated per removal price of $1,500 per tree, including the stump grinding. So that's, the prices for that work is going to be a little bit higher than your traditional street tree removals where you can get equipment right next to the, to the work site.
Tim, are they going to, in that area, because I've had a few people ask me over the last couple of years, with just a general brush in that area, is that something we're going to take care of?
We're working on it. We did go through fall of 2018 and, and clean up any brush on the ground. We did remove any invasives that were kind of. We did remove any invasives that were kind of coming in, you know, maple seedlings and saplings and things like that. The problem is the slope of the grade in some of those areas, it's not conducive to mowing equipment that we have.
Right.
It's pretty steep. So we do the best we can with the areas. The areas that are getting brushy are really difficult to mow.
Yeah, okay.
But, yeah, these removals are in that same general area.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Number three, street tree planting. In doing that inventory work, it was really nice. I got out and as soon as you're out in somebody's front yard, they're out there right away. They want to know what you're doing, and, which is all good, because it was a good opportunity for people to get educated about the problem, and I could point out EAB right in the trees and like, oh, yeah, I was wondering what that was. But the number one question I got was, am I going to get a new tree? Not even, once they knew that we were going to be removing the trees, am I getting a new tree? That was usually their only question. So I, based upon that feedback that I got, I feel it's important enough that, given the unique situation, circumstances of dealing with this infestation, that we include some replacement plantings in here. I calculated about a 75% replacement rate because, just because there was a tree planted in front of this house in that location doesn't necessarily mean that it's a good spot to replant it. And sometimes people had three trees planted where maybe they only should have had two planted originally. So that kind of incorporates some of those factors in that. And then people that just flat out don't want a tree replanted. So I calculated up, you know, average cost of planting a two-inch substantial bald and burlap tree for all of the replacements that we'll be doing on the streets. Park trees, I didn't specifically include any money in for that. We do have about $11,000 that has currently been in our budget allocation for replanting, and then that works good to get some of those parks and green spaces, as well as the Packers' First Down for Trees program has been really good for getting new trees established in our parks and green spaces. So given that those two programs are, been fairly active and good for us, I didn't include any money specifically for replanting in parks. Now, that's not to say that we might have a specific project with a specific focus that we might want to hone in on, and we certainly could revisit that and allocate some money for that. But at this point, I didn't specifically include anything within this budget proposal for that. We did get a grant from New Water as well that will help us plant trees in three of our parks at Eschewahomee, at Smith Park, and Argonne. We've got 100 trees going in those sites that'll be paid through that grant program. So there are opportunities out there other than budgeted items. Any questions on that?
Is the Packer program, is that, does that only go towards parks and things, or is that allowed to go towards street planting?
We could allocate those trees wherever we wanted to, as long as it's public spaces. The caveat with that is the size of the planting material is generally a little bit smaller. Inch and a quarter is kind of where we're running, whereas the proposal here, I've got a little bit more established tree, something more substantial at two inches in caliber.
Okay. Because I love the idea of the street planting and doing as many as we can, because that's one thing I just, I'm not a big fan of some of our seasons here, winter and stuff like, you know, especially, but when, you know, riding down some of the streets that were on April Lane and Blue Ridge, things like that, in the tight quarters they seem to be, and it's just, it's really beautiful when you ride through there in the winter and when it's got fresh snow, when the seasons are changed, when it falls coming, when the, in the spring, when the trees are budding out, it's just a really cool atmosphere. I'm all for that. The more we can do of that, I'm all for it.
And there are some streets that are going to basically clear cut from one end to the other. I can't, I can't really say that any other way. Orchid, Avondale, Barberry, you know, those are streets that are all ash, that are planted 50 foot on center from one end to the other. So I think the offering the replacement replantings is going to be a good, a good way for the residents to at least cope with the other reality of losing a beautiful tree-lined street.
Yeah.
I agree.
Any other questions on that? Thank you, Chris.
Well, Tim, I'd just like to say thank, you worked really, really hard on this, and I know that for the last three years that I've been the president, we've been going back and forth with the ash tree, and it's a true dilemma. And I was doing some research, and years ago, there was Dutch elm disease that wiped out a lot of trees, and then there was a different kind of a disease that wiped out a different kind of tree, and so we just have to have all trees that don't get diseases.
Yeah.
Or bugs.
And I guess there's a lesson to be learned there. What do they say? Those that don't learn from history are doomed to repeat it? You know, that's exactly what's happening here. You know, Dutch, American elm lined all of our streets, a little bit before my time, but then Dutch elm disease wiped that out, and what did they do? They planted Norway maples and green ash. Well, now we've got the situation to deal with. So with that being said, a diversity of plantings is going to be a good thing, and I just want you to be prepared. Not every single resident is going to be 100% thrilled with the tree that they have in front of them. The only way to achieve diversity is one planting at a time, and not ever, we're not going to even plant any Norway maples, just because we have an overabundance of them, but we are going to be offering a variety of different species to, hopefully we don't have to repeat this, the same situation in the future.
No apple trees, I hope.
No apple trees.
All right, I'll move to approve the Emerald Ash Core Funding Request as presented in item 11D in the amount of, at least...
If you could just approve the management plan?
We only need to approve the actual management plan for this. We don't need to approve the actual dollars.
Right. Right.
I'll second it, but I got a question.
Yes.
Four and five, you didn't touch on those, I mean, trailways and that in our forests and our parks and stuff like that. You're going to take them out, are you going to haul them out of there, or are you just going to follow them and let them deteriorate naturally?
If you don't mind, I can expand upon these a little bit. Number four is our natural areas and miscellaneous village properties, and then tied into that is going to be number five, the trailways in our wooded parks. Basically, we have an obligation to make sure that our properties are safe. So if we have a trail, a bench, playground, even a mowed green space, any tree that is within one tree height of those areas, we will be removing.
Taking them completely out, not just letting them regenerate themselves?
Right. Yes. My intention is to do a combination of either removing the brush and chipping it and hauling it away, or simply just chipping it on-site. For instance, in Sherwood Forest Park, we can turn and shoot on a chipper, blow it into the woods. Those chips will naturally deteriorate over time.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, if, is, if they're natural forest areas anyways, and its tree dies, falls on the ground, it deteriorates naturally. Why can't we do that? The tops of these trees, even if you let them lay there and everything, take them down and let them lay there, provides refuge for the small animals and everything that's around as well, as well as just leaving them lay there so that they could suck back into the earth?
Mm-hmm.
Why can't we do that?
Well, some of the trees, we're not going to be able to fell in a location that would allow us to do that. You know, we're going to have to bring them, depending which way they're leaning or what other obstacles are there. But we certainly, there will certainly be enough of that woody debris laying around. I don't think that's going to be a problem, but with the mechanized equipment used to remove some of these trees, you know, simply just running them through a chipper into the woods is going to be an inefficient way to do that.
It's more time-consuming though. Why not let nature take its course?
But it has to do a lot with the sheer volume of material that's going to be generated. Like Sherwood Forest Park is probably 50% ash.
Why take it all down? Why not leave it up there for the birds, the woodpeckers and stuff like that?
We certainly can fell some of them into locations. Yes? I don't know that we're going to be able to do that with all of them.
I'm just saying, I mean, I'm all for, I understand the street trees and parks and stuff like that, but natural setting areas, woods in particular, with trails running through them, people are going into the woods to see the nature. Every time that I've done wood projects in my properties up north, we left this brush there, we left trees there, left some bigger stuff there to let nature take its course and everything. When you get a planting, when you own a parcel of property and they clear cut an area, they leave some trees there, and the underbrush grows again, but it just promotes more and more vitalization of the ecosystem by letting it, letting it take its, let it do its thing. And it saves us money by not having to take it all out of there.
Yeah. I don't know that it's going to save a whole lot of time, just because of the mechanized equipment that's going to be used for some of this.
Chainsaw?
A chainsaw, but then once it's on the ground, you know, hydraulic equipment to move the logs and debris.
Why move them?
We certainly can leave them in place if that's the direction you'd like us to go.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, it's, if we're concerned about, you know, that's $450,000 that we're borrowing money for when they're designed to get sucked back up into and create more plants for the next generations.
Tim, could we just draft the spec as saying whatever's most economical, that it's just their job to fall the tree or whatever in the natural areas, and if it's more economical for them to chew it and spit it back out versus just fall the tree, fell the tree, whatever the word.
Tim and I did have the conversation also that, I mean, there's a lot of, I just thought maybe you could just let them fall in, but when we have trails running through some of those, we have an obligation.
If you have the tree fall across the thing, you can cut the one half of the tree off on one side, the chunk out of the middle, and let it lay there.
Right. But the problem, Mark, becomes if somebody's walking on that trail when that tree falls, and I know you're going to say that how often is that going to happen? It happened to my brother-in-law's sister.
Mary, if you cut the tree down and it's laying down when there's nobody around.
Right.
If it's across the trail, you can cut off on both sides of the trail and your trail is free. It's not going to fall down again on the person walking through there.
Right. I agree with you. But there's a lot of them that have to be moved out of the way when they fall. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know how many you can leave laying in a woods. I don't...
I think that's where the, kind of the, Mary, where the, kind of the key is. I think there's a middle ground there. I know what you're saying, Mark. Exactly. I kind of had the same thought. But if the rate of the ash is, what did you say, 50% Tim? More? I don't think you did.
That's a lot of debris.
That's a lot of trees.
We'll have it stacked up.
Yeah. But I, but I think there's, yeah, definitely makes sense to at least take some of that and just kind of leave them as is. I agree with that.
Right.
Yeah.
So...
Whoever that line is.
I like the idea of a middle ground. You know, like, I don't think all of them maybe need to be, but I don't, I don't think, to your point too, I mean, you're going to have a log house if 50% are all laying on top of each other. So I think there may be some type of middle ground.
Yeah.
Don't know what it is. I don't know if it's a 50/50, 60/40, 70/30, but there could probably be a marrying of the two. Okay.
And the cost savings, I think, to actually remove that amount of brush at that point is fairly negligible. You know, the real expense is mobilizing that equipment, getting the crews there, you know, whether, we certainly can leave a good percentage of it, we can chip the other percentage right into the woods. But the, you know, overall, in the big scope of the project, the savings will be somewhat negligible.
But if the people are walking through the woods, the trails in the woods that we have there, see nature, the little animals, the rabbits, the whatever that they're getting because they don't get out hunting or whatever like I would or something, you leave the brush there for the animals to live in. Now you're going to see more animals in there, you know, more wildlife, birds and whatnot too.
Sure. And there will be plenty of that, that's not going to be associated with this project. You know, the areas that are further in from the trails, there'll be all kinds of brush and debris laying around.
Well, just making the point.
Sure. Number six is an equipment purchase. That would be a hydraulic rapple that will fit onto our small John Deere compact tractor. Yes, this project is, there's a lot of contracted work here. That's not to say that if we get a tree that falls in somebody's backyard out of our conservancy area that I can just call a contractor and they're going to go over there and skip over and do that. So there is some work that village staff is going to have to be doing. Right now, we have a skid steer that is really good at moving that debris if you're on pavement or frozen ground, but it'll tear up somebody's backyard or turf areas really quickly. So this is a nice little way to help us get some of that work done efficiently. Otherwise, we load it on little wagon carts and push it up out of the backyard, but if we can utilize a piece of equipment that we already have, namely the John Deere tractor, that's going to help us out quite a bit. Number seven, surveying property lines. There's some areas where it's not really known exactly where the property line is, and if we have an individual tree that is a substantial cost to remove, it might behoove us to know exactly if that is indeed on our property or if it's on the adjacent homeowner's property. So I did put in a little bit of an allocation for that type of work. The caveat is they won't come out and just find like a single corner post on a property. They have to do the full research and the full survey as part of that. And then number eight, disposing and grinding of this large quantity of material that we're going to generate. That's a large horizontal grinder. They can chip logs up to 40 inches, I think, just enormous amounts of material, and we'll have to find markets for that material that we generate. We'll use a lot of it in our parks for landscaping, trees. Clipstein Park, we use a fair amount, but maybe there's opportunity there where we actually can produce a saleable product that maybe local landscapers might be interested in purchasing as a low-cost alternative to cedar bark mulch or something like that. So there's opportunities there.
Any more questions?
I hope.
Okay, we have motion and a second to approve the management plan for the five-year budget projection for EAB. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I said, one quick question. Are a lot of ashes in Clipstein?
Not anymore.
Oh, they're gone.
There's six.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Those are part of that 50% reduction in park trees, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, there's six left, and those are the only six trees that we are actively treating with insecticides.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Tim. Like I said, Tim worked really hard on this, so thank you for all the information. Okay. I'm sorry?
I said, thank you.
Oh. Okay. 11E. Action on Bid Award Sports Complex Plaza Project.
So this is in front of Cornerstone where it doesn't, well, where the Cornerstone meets the softball diamonds, there's the stairway and this fountain menagerie, and it's a maintenance nightmare. So we have worked with Rettler... nightmare. So we have worked with Rettler to devise a system that would actually be fully handicap accessible to the exit that's at, on the second floor of the Cornerstone. And then, cause right now it only is partially handicap accessible, it'll essentially get you up all but like the last ten steps, which makes no sense. So it's kinda to bulldoze that out, make it a handicap accessible trail all the way down, a little bit easier to maintain, and then connect those two parking lots. And there, it makes a little more sense for my traffic circulation, because currently if you come in one parking lot, you actually have to go all the way back out around Cornerstone and out to the streets and down Fernando to get back into the parking lot on the other side. So this was publicly bid, and Rex's recommendation is to take the low bidder of Peters Concrete and include alternate one and three. Alternate number two, we're not so sure that's a real solution. They would repour the corner slab, but I think it's sinking because of runoff on the roof. So we're gonna try just mudjacking that and seeing if that solves that problem. So we recommend award of the bid to the low bidder Peters Concrete with alternates one and three in the total bid amount of three fifty-seven, one thirty-six, ten.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the bid with alternates one and three to Peters Concrete for three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-six, ten. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Glenn is gonna be dancing a happy dance because he works really hard every year on that. Okay, eleven F. Marhill Pond and Spring Meadows Pond Contract Awards.
Then Steve Burr has bid out the Marhill Pond. It's, it's on the west Marhill, between the end of that and Packerland. So there's a pond there, and then the Spring Meadows Pond Contract, the one, um, one we have a grant for, and the other one is a joint project with the Town of Lawrence. And then the low bid is for Radkey Contractors in the amount of two thirty-four, one thirty-one, nineteen, and the Spring Meadows Construction Concrete to, also to Radkey in the amount of one forty-four, forty, ninety-five. This is all in the Stormwater Utility for any remaining amounts.
Move to approve as recommended?
Second.
Motion and a second to recommend approval of the both ponds, one for two thirty-four, one thirty-one, nineteen, and Spring Meadows for one forty-four, forty, ninety-five. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Eleven G. Review and recommendation of TIF number five project nine, Nifong Development, Marvell Lane Light Pole Relocation.
We have two street, uh, streetlights that are on wood poles that are on Marvell. There's only actually two. And both of them somewhat inhibit the sort of perpendicular parking that will go on Marvell as part of the Nifong Development. So it's a staff recommendation is that we would relocate those two poles and then have them build more continuous angled parking in a, in a more simplified fashion rather than going in and out. We're requesting funding of about fifteen thousand. It's thirteen thousand, four hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents for WPS to relocate those poles, and then they would also upgrade them to the black fiberglass poles like you see along Holmgren Way. And we would use TIF funds to cover that. And that would only happen if that project moves forward. Not that I think it won't.
Move to approve the contract to the WPS for movement. Two light poles on pro, uh, TIF number five project.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the WPS contract for thirteen thousand, four hundred thirty-eight, eighty-one for the Nifong Development area. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Eleven H. Action on replacement hires for community service officer. Allison.
So we hired as, Justin Hoffman, Hoffman, as a full-time public safety officer, and he had been a part-time CSO. And then recently, Ashley Berth was our full-time CSO, was hired by the Brown County Sheriff's Office. So we're currently down to zero. But they were looking for some flexibility, and I guess we still want that. Aren't, there's an offer out there for, to replace the full-time position, but should we not be able to fill that? Brian is asking that, for the flexibility to hire three part-time people to fill, fill those roles. Oftentimes, there are students that are going to technical college to be police officers or firefighters. So there's, that's generally the niche we find. But they have a great candidate in the, for the full-time position, so they think that's gonna go through. But we would still like to have the authority to be flexible if that does not work out.
And it would all fall within the budget?
Correct.
So.
I'll move to approve the, uh, request, uh, replacement hires for community service officers.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the replacement hires for the community service officer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Opposed.
You're opposed?
Yes.
Okay. One, opposition. Okay. Eleven I. Action on deputy chief position. Allison.
So we've successfully convinced Randy Toos to delay retirement yet again. And, and part of trying to keep him and just while the chief kinda gets his bearings on overall staff within the department and how we would like to organize the management of it, once he gets a full grasp on everything that's happening, plus an opportunity to review the Fitch study and recommendations, what we would like to do at this point is promote Randy. So keep in mind, Randy was interim chief. He went back down to commander. What we'd like to do is promote him back to deputy chief and go back to his salary when he was interim chief. And then that position would stay in place at least until Randy retires and the chief will come back with a full management plan. At this point, he would not be replacing the second commander position until he comes back with a overall organizational structure. And we would like Randy's pay to be retroactive to February seventeenth, if possible, because that was the day that he went back to being a commander.
I'll make a motion. Will we approve deputy chief position?
Second. Motion and a second to approve the deputy chief position. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
And then just to clarify, this is a structural change and the pay change that you're really approving. We then have to jump through some hoops with Police and Fire Commission to actually do the promotion. So just-
Correct.
So we're aware there's multiple steps here that-
Right.
We've been going through.
We're not done with this yet. Okay. Any items for next agenda? If you have any, call the office. What about, oh, nevermind, nevermind.
What, what's the status? Are we canceling all committee meetings between now and, I think the governor said April twenty-fourth? That, that's fine with me. I just-
We've canceled everything. The only ones that we have not canceled yet would be the, um, park board and the finance and personnel, but I have a feeling that they, they might end up canceled.
We're trying to avoid anything that would be essentially non-essential. So there's nothing in our ordinance that requires anything to go to committee. And then it's also, you're bringing in more people and-
Right.
You know, exacerbating the situation, if you will. So we're trying to boil down to whatever we, we need to do and then get village board approval for that. So at this point, I would still plan on village board for the end of April. I don't know that we'll have a lot of items, and maybe by then it may just be a virtual meet, meeting. Maybe we'll try and figure out the call-in. Logistically, that's a little complicated and awkward, I guess, for a flow of a meeting, but we'll work through that. And then with the governor's orders today, we had been waiting to see if construction was gonna be deemed essential or non-essential. So there may have to be something with site plan, depending on if there's some projects that need to-
Construction is essential.
For the most part, it is. If there's architectural-type things, they're asked not to, you know, like plumbing and electricians are to the extent that like it would need to be like an emergency service. So we are having Eric avoid any residential. If it's an existing home, and he just did an addition, we would rather him not go through the home unless there's something, you know, if somebody's power is out and they obviously need some assistance and have an electrician coming, then we would have to do that. And then on the commercial side, he is trying to schedule that so either crews are gone from the site or, you know, limiting how many people are in that. You know, some places, if you go, you'll see like two people on the site, and that's not a big deal, or things are being done outdoors. It's pretty easy. Other sites, it, you know, like the Expo Center can have a hundred people there and they're all spread out, but we don't necessarily want Eric running through and weaving through all those people. So something like that may be done more like three o'clock, four o'clock, just to avoid that. So-
This building is checked out for the public except for voting?
Except for voting and, well, public safety is, is physically here, but people, the public could not come in to do anything like that. All of our other village facilities are closed. People can walk through the parks. That's allowed, you know, if you're walking your dog or exercising. But people should be aware that our playground equipment, shelters, they're not clean, they're not sanitized, and those are covered in the governor's orders. And people really shouldn't be congregating, if you will, in the park.
Thank you.
Okay.
People are encouraged, if anybody decides to watch this, please send in absentee ballot requests. We would really like to avoid a large number of people on election day. And that would be our biggest push right now. If they could email those requests in with your absentee ballot application and a photocopy or picture of your driver's license or state ID.
Passport, yep. Driver's license.
So do people have to show up at your office to get the absentee ballot?
No, you can go on myvote.wi.gov.
Go slowly. Myvote-
Dot wi.gov.
Dot wi.gov, and they can sign up there and then you'll send them up?
And then they have to include a copy of their proof of identification along with that, if we don't have that already in the office.
Okay.
Or they can go to the ashwabanen.com website, print off an application, send that in, also with a copy of their proof of identification. Or we have in-person voting for the next eight business days.
Okay.
And you can continue to make absentee ballot requests until when?
April second.
So next Thursday?
That's longer than it would be normally, yes?
That's always been the deadline.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
They did open up registration through, it, it was closed. State opened it up again through March thirtieth.
People can come to vote in person, and we're asking people to separate themselves. So you can do it, and that's probably a better option, frankly, than waiting until election day. They were, you know, people straggling in over time is better than them all showing up at the same time. But the best option is absentee ballots. We will mail it to you once you send us that.
Patrick, people that have not registered have to come in person.
They can do it online yet.
They can do it online?
At MyVote.
Well, they can do it, but people that did not register.
Correct.
Okay. There's a link to all of this on our website, on, under the clerk's office, and also under our COVID, there's ashwabanen.com slash COVID nineteen slash, the full update.
Okey-dokey.
Okay. Number thirteen.
During the meeting of the, the village board of the village of Ashwabanen may convene into closed session pursuant to a Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight-five-one E for the purpose of possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding parcel VA dash four-six dash five and tax incremental district number three where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. B, Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight-five-one E for the purpose of possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding parcels VA dash five-four dash two and VA five-five dash A and tax incremental districts three and five where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. C, Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight-five-one E for the purpose of possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding parcels VA dash four-six-zero dash P dash one-one-three, VA four-six-zero dash P dash one-one-four, and VA dash four-six-zero dash P dash one-one-four dash one and tax incremental districts three and five where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. D, Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight-five-one C for considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee, including village manager and Ashwabanen Public Safety Employee Personnel over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. E, Wisconsin state, oh boy, statute section nineteen point eight-five-one F for the purpose of possible discussion and action on considering village manager and Ashwabanen Public Safety Employee Personnel complaint matters in financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of a specific person's preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where per ends B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. F, Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight-five-one G for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy with respective village manager and Ashwabanen Public Safety Employee Personnel complaint matters in a keen Ashland LLC litigation in which it is or likely to become involved. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight-five-two to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
Move to go to closed session?
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Voice vote, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski.
Yes.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
We are in closed session. Yeah, I know.